I'd like to call to all of the council meeting of the city of Nelson, March the first, 2021. Take them all up, have them on their prayer. Father God, we thank you for today, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. And, Lord, we just ask that you would be with each one of us, Lord, to lead, guide, and direct us in all decisions that we make here, Father, that it would be for the good of the people. We ask that you would be with our servicemen and women here and overseas. We ask that you would be with our law enforcement, our EMTs, Father God, as they're on the road. Keep them safe, Lord. We ask of you this name. Amen. James?
Your allegiance is the flag of the United States of America. Do the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, united in the love of liberty and justice.
If you rub off and make you move to the right seats, what do we count?
It's really like, she's trying to abuse me.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we have approved the agenda.
Say again.
Okay. Next, we have public appearance. And can I get a motion to approve the minutes for February the first, 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February one.
Second?
Second.
On the table? Yes, thank you. Department reports. Would you like to come forward, Mr. Downey, and give your Cherokee County report?
Yes, thank you. I guess compared to last month, it was a little bit busier up here as far as call for service. We had a couple of deaths, one suicide. Responded Pickens County to, in reference to a domestic dispute. There was a couple of juvenile calls, but as stated, nothing resulted in a criminal report or charges filed. And then a suspicious vehicle at the church, no criminal activity, and the driver was a resident of Nelson. And a child custody exchange, which isn't uncommon anywhere in the county. But just to follow up with the data that we've collected for the speed box, you know, I know that the council's looking to make a decision. My recommendation, as far as the law enforcement side of it, is, you know, a lot of times, and I explained this, Miss Reel and everything, is a lot of times when it's bigger vehicles, they look like they're going a lot faster than what they are. We see this in neighborhoods and different roadways throughout the county where we do put these boxes. And then you have some roads that it's a large number of the population that is speeding. And that's the roads that we kind of focus on as complaint roads, you know, and you start to see more accidents and things like that in those areas. Based off this data, actually, you know, I think it's, like you said, it was pretty much dead on. Everybody's kind of, you know, doing the speed limit. There is a couple of people that were in the 15 over range, but for the most part, you know, everyone was in the five to 10 and right on the speed limit. I don't know how this helps y'all as far as making a decision on the permanent speed bumps versus the temporary, but I definitely think if you put one or two in, that would probably knock off that 56 to 60 mile an hour speeder. And who knows, maybe it'll knock off the top 10% of that, if not more. But with an average speed of 23.9 and the speed limit's 25, that's a pretty good statistics as far as how people are driving on that road.
So you've got, you just got the one up, really?
I'm sorry?
It's a one up, so you just have, you just have a couple of people that are...
Yeah, I mean, from what it appears that, you know, if you, if you look on the miles per hour with the average vehicles and the peak, so 858 are between 26 and 30, which is what I have highlighted. And I highlight that because that's on the, even when you're coming off a hill, sometimes people might not have their foot in the gas, but just the, the weight of the vehicle's going to push you over that speed limit. And if I was out there running speed detection, I wouldn't be focusing on that group. So anything above that, that would be what we're focusing on, just like we tell our deputies. We focus on that 5% that's out here that doesn't have, that disregards law altogether. And based off these statistics, you know, that's a very few amount of people, and more than likely, they probably don't even live in those. These are probably people that are just passing through, or, you know, the big trucks, or whatever the case may be. But if you see a big truck that's coming off that, that roadway at 60, between 56 and 60, it's going to look like it's going 100. So I could, I can understand people's concern, but the data says different as far as, you know, actual people with heavy boots.
Well, it looks like for the whole week, there was only one person in that 50, 60, 60.
So on a seven day period, if you want to break it down even further, there was only three that were above 45 miles per hour. So that's, that's not, that's not too bad statistics. Hopefully, this will help y'all make a decision as far as the speeds versus what you, what you all are wanting to pay for, is to be permanent or the temporary.
Is there a way to town on here, the time of day for these bottom three here, the 46 to 50 and the 56 to 60?
I'm not sure how that you would pick that out, because it's not vehicle specific. If it was one of the, say, Taggart...
So 56 peak, peak miles per hour, 56, that would have been at 3:30 PM, right? And then you have 47, 30 AM for 49, that would have been the other one. And then 45 was at 8:30 AM.
But the number that, you know, that I would focus on more is look at your average miles per hour. You know, obviously, in the morning, people, they're on their way to work. It's a little bit higher. So you're looking at, you know, 30 miles an hour at 4:30, 20, almost 28 at 5, 27 at 5:30. Those are the, the numbers that you, that I would focus on, and then what percentage is above that, which, you know, according to the, to the data, is not very many.
Your professional opinion, would you say that you don't see it an issue here based on the average?
To me, the, the one that's 56, one out of 3,000, four cars, I would not consider this like a complaint road. However, that person that is doing 56 is putting everybody at risk.
Gotcha.
Whether they're walking or out in their yard, they lose control, you know, that's, that's 30 over the speed limit, and that's an arrestable offense, reckless driving, especially in a residential area like this.
And it, and it happened once in seven days.
Right. I've heard no speed bumps up right now.
No, it's very unlikely.
And that could be some teenager that's driving through, or, you know, whatever the case may be. But based off that, I mean, this, I wouldn't classify that as a complaint road like we would say Highway 92 or Highway 20, places like that. It's off the charts, on the high end. Nobody's doing the speed limit, everybody's above it. And in this case, it's kind of just the opposite. We just got one or two bad apples that are, that are kind of...
What do you think about us purchasing one of the signs like you've got and moving it around the city?
Well, like I said...
Trying to slow them down like that.
A day or two, you know, it usually has an effect, because they think that, oh, gosh, when that thing starts flashing at me, you know, I'm getting ticketed. And they're good to use when people, you know, figure out that, hey, this is just their, you know, taking data, or whatever the, whatever the reason is for it. They kind of go back to the way they were driving before. So if you guys wanted to collect data, I would say it would be good for, for future decisions as far as the roadways and speed limits and things like that. But to use it as a deterrent, it's, I wouldn't say it's cost effective to purchase one just for that reason. You know, we can, we can come up with other ideas as a group, like parking a patrol car or, you know, and even that, like I said, when they figure out that nobody's in it, they, they go right back to the way they're driving. But in a case like this, if it was, if we were heavy on the back end as far as the, the top speeds and things like that, then, you know, I'd recommend more enforcement on that road before I would the purchase of however much those units are. I don't know how much they are off the top. I just don't think it'd be cost effective, unless you need it for data.
What if we, what if we waited until May and then put it on Pickens Street up on the Cherokee and, and just took a look at that?
I can put it wherever.
So, I mean, I agree that you don't have to, you don't have, you don't, you really don't have the numbers here to set up a patrol car or to even have somebody set with only three, literally three people in a, in a week, so.
And that's...
We'd potentially written a ticket.
Right. And we, we can get it put wherever the council decides, or wherever y'all want to, to check speeds at.
There's only certain roads they can run radar on to get tickets that I don't think Blue Ridge is on, if I remember right.
No, I mean, Pickens County, can we...
I don't believe in on that, as far as getting tickets for speeding like that. I don't think you can get a ticket without the radar things, unless I'm incorrect on that.
No, you can write a visual estimate ticket, it's not recommended, because...
Yeah, that may not hold up.
Right. But you, you know, as officers, when you run speed as far as radar and laser, you're given a visual estimate on that citation.
Yeah.
And so I don't think you want to get into just visual estimates on citations, you don't want to go that route. If you're following somebody, you can kind of do the same thing, but your speedometer has to be calibrated, calibrated. There's a lot of factors that go into it.
Well, I mean, we have, but like, there's roads, I know we have radar, like the...
Permitted?
Yeah, and I gave those, I think it was to Brookshire or somebody, I sent those in to them. So I know there's roads that we can do that on, but I know, because Markie told me, there's some that we can't, like, there's just not enough length...
Yeah.
...to set up to get...
You gotta have the 500-foot visibility, you can't be within 500 feet of the speed limit changes and things like that. And that's the problem you run into when it comes to inside the city.
Pickens Street, I have the list in there. I know Kennesaw, I think there's one that you can, there's, there's one you can, there's one you can't, because I don't think Blue Ridge was one of the ones that you can.
We'll get back with you and maybe, maybe do something like that.
Yeah, and I'll...
They have the radar list for that side now.
Yeah, speaking of the cost, I'll, I'll get an answer for that for the next meeting, with those boxes, how much they cost. But, you know, I think if you kept it frequent, moved around, it, it would be somewhat effective. But I wouldn't just buy it for that purpose. I'd use it for the data, decisions on roadways, you know, just like for the speed humps, bumps, whatever you all decide, that that's what it's best used for.
Okay. Can't all these do what everybody else is doing, and put a nice roundabout right there?
We have to, so I'm gonna joke about that, but that's, I don't know what the cost...
They were.
I'm looking at cost effective, what's down the road, what is most cost effective for you all? And if, I know you'd spend more money up front for one of those because of the paving and the layout, and, but that might be more cost effective for you all than putting a speed hump, or two or three of them. That would, that slows people down for sure.
Yeah.
If y'all have ever driven on Blox Parkway, it's a circle every time going to Chattahoochee Tech when I was going to college up there, it's like, oh my gosh.
Woodstock's gone down there, too.
Well, we're having one installed at Woodstock Road and Victory Drive, for any of you that are familiar with that, they're fixing to put one in. And for as long as I can remember as a kid, it's always been just a stop sign. Then they turned it into a three-way stop, and they talked about putting a red light. Well, now they're just going to put, you know, one of the circles in there.
It just keeps the flow moving.
It keeps the flow, it keeps people slowed down, and you don't have to worry about head-on collisions and an intersection.
372, 369 are like that.
Right, that's a perfect, perfect example.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the space. And we'll get back with you on maybe Pickens Street in May.
Yeah.
Next up is Mayor's report, and I know that we're going to need just time to talk about property tax overpayments. I know that Kelsey's had a conversation with us before that you can't collect on property tax or pushed to collect.
I think it was seven.
Is it? Okay.
The board told me.
So I'll let you give the council your findings.
Well, some of that kind of falls into, is actually Section 9, or number 9A, because that company had actually talked a little bit about all of that too, as far as collecting on the allowances. So I don't know if we're going to do that now, we got them.
For this one was the overtaxed payment, we're getting refunds.
Okay.
And what do we need for that? So you just need, anybody done it?
Yeah, it's done, the checks are written, the credits have been, are off of the accounts.
And what was it?
There was about 11 credits that were being issued back, it was a $11,800 total.
Okay.
And Jeff went and wrote it, and we had the auditor to look over it, so we don't get into trouble.
Those are the ones that she's been bringing up for about, about two, right, two years now. We just weren't sure how to get them off to where, where it didn't hit us, you know, with, with our tax stuff, so. But I think we've, we've done that now, so the checks have been... Have you sent them out yet?
No, Jane signed them a little while ago, I gotta get Susan to make them, when they signed them.
All right. Trees at Pickens Street Park, do we have that on here?
I do, but I didn't know if that was an executive session thing or if it was in there, so if you do get one, I'll cut the information.
Is it on here? Where's it at?
I wish, I had it for executive session.
Okay.
Because I didn't know if that was which one I was reading on.
Okay, we can, we can discuss that there. Okay. And then I had, yeah, the camera, so we've got, I had another one too, but the camera, we have been trying to get ahold of, Kelsey has been trying to get ahold of the power company to get them to allow us in writing to put a camera on a power pole down at the park, so we've got visibility of that going into the, the trail area.
This is for the dumpsters are, sorry. We got one for the parks.
You did get the one from, I thought...
The parks, it was the one for Georgia Power to get them, to give us authority to use their pole.
Did you get it?
No, they've just spent a night getting them to answer, so.
And I thought you were going to put a pole there.
No, we're going to do a pole up here where the dumpsters are, just for us to put some kind of a pole there. Because I cannot get, TDS is given, they're, they're fine, they're using it in their poles, that's not an issue. I cannot get Georgia Power to answer, I'm emailing and calling, they've called me back once, got more information, and I cannot get a response. So I talked to Aaron, he said we could install a pole or have TDS put a pole, but I can't even know what TDS would charge, so he said we could put a pole, possibly, no question.
I might be able to help with that. You said it's Georgia Power?
Yes.
And y'all just want to put a camera on pole?
Yeah, I talked to the guy, and they just said all data, the lines don't like anything attached to their pole in case they have to climb them.
I, yeah.
So.
I'll get back to you this week.
Okay, they just said that's great, not, it was more just, we can put a 6x6 pole and bury it in there.
Ain't there two poles on that far ain't? TDS got one in.
They do, but it would still have to attach one to each, I think. It would still, like, the lines would still have to go from one to the other. So Aaron just said that if we just put a 6x6 in the ground, the guys trench it and drop pond of it in, and they can run it over to there, and they won't use anybody else's pole, and...
Didn't Ricky say that he might know where a...
It's on his property.
Okay.
It's, and they'll probably do it, then I'm going to keep asking him for stuff, just to keep asking him.
I don't know how much it, do you know how much a power pole is?
No, but you can get a 6x6 by 16, it's under $100, if it's addressed to you.
So it'd be 12 foot tall?
Yeah, and you really don't even need it that tall. So, I mean, Aaron, I mean, the lines that are even at the bathrooms are like eight, nine feet tall.
How tall?
He just said, you know, try to keep doors, and they can't spot it and get it down, but it's more just catching people holding in where the dumpsters are, so it's getting the rear of the vehicles, whereas the one now is getting the side, and so when people have to drop and stuff, they're not supposed to drop, they find out who it is.
Okay. So if Downey doesn't, isn't able to help us with that, then we'll move forward with just getting a pole and putting it on the pole.
Yeah, if I have to dig out, I'm going to locate for the actual...
The 811, yeah, I heard, I talked to Ricky about that too, just...
Okay, and the other one is the camera for the sanitation truck. I know in the past, we've had issues with it being on personal property, but really and truly, the way that it's parked right now, it would have to be on Jean's house.
That's what the guys at Centec suggested, so.
Was it bound or...
I've got, made a double check with him, but I want to make sure everybody here was okay with it before I approached him about it. With the truck being there, I figured, I can't see him having an issue with it, but I didn't want to approach him until...
It might deter people from coming on this property and...
Well, which is what they do now. They do, they jump up there and then they'll...
Dump their trash and whatever.
...it's not awake.
Yeah, I'm just bound with Jean, I don't know.
I'd be fine with me, I would drive me crazy if people come along. Probably not, but I'd be...
Yeah.
You hear that?
The next thing is going to be finance reports. Miranda?
First, I'll go over the bank balances. Bank account balances for the general fund, we'll start with the general fund, $764,282. SLOSS 3, which is the old Cherokee County SLOSS, current balance is $103,067. SLOSS 4, which is the second oldest Cherokee SLOSS, $664,940. Pickens SLOSS 2, $586,267. SLOSS 5, which is the new Cherokee County SLOSS, $439,582. The cash reserve fund currently is at $166,176. The new Pickens SLOSS 2020 is $177,192. Currently, our budget is remaining at 47%. Normally, we'd be at a 53% if we were working full capacity with our, using our budget. So our total, our total annual year-to-date expenditures so far is $267,844. And our general excess of revenue over expenditures is $229,317. So all in all, we're doing really good. Again, we've got to work on doing our amendments until, I'd like to get a couple of things cleared up before we actually look at doing that, so we'll probably do that over the next couple of weeks. Also, next meeting, I'll have a budget calendar set aside for you guys, so that way we can kind of see, we are going to have to start working on our upcoming budget for adoption in June. So also, we need to work on our capital budget coming up to be adopted in June. So, other than that, that's all I got.
I hope, I hope that once we have the, we have the bid back, then it'll, it's pushed our, it's pushed our capital improvement meeting for, you know, the council back until we know the dollars that we're going to be throwing at Kennesaw Avenue. Once we have that amount, then we can go and look at what's feasible and what's not feasible in the capital improvements plan.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a big, that's, again, one of the things we're waiting on, is to tie up some of these loose ends that we've got to put behind because of this pandemic. So hopefully, we can start making some progress and move forward.
Yeah. And because it's such a, that, Kennesaw Avenue is going to be, that's a huge chunk, I want to make sure that we, we know what we have before we start backing into projects for the, for the year. Anything else?
No, that's it, that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay, next up, it is... Do we have to do that here?
No.
Just make it out. I'll do that in a minute. Unfinished business. Discussing vote on COVID-19 cleaning of the city parks and bathrooms. Right now, we are currently doing the bathrooms six days a week. I think we, me personally, I think we can probably cut that down to about three days a week. And the city hall is only, we don't need sanitation, we've been moving our machine around. We just have the lady come in after our meetings and just clean everything in here, and in the thing, tidy our bathroom up, so. So that's usually about, that's right on once a month. So does anybody have any questions about that, or should we continue it? What are your thoughts on it? Barbara? For the parks, Sam? Yeah, because this is the kind of thing that we probably, I know that we have a lot of kids, especially from the school, and I, my grandson even plays down there, but I see, we see a lot of kids down there. So I don't think that it's something I would cut completely out right now with, with everybody, you know, COVID still being an active thing, but...
Maybe cut it back for...
We could cut it back to, to three days a week versus six.
Right.
Our new maintenance man, he can do some of this too, on every other day or whatever.
You know, we can, we can, we can actually put that on him, so.
I mean, this time of year especially, but I know in summertime, he won't have time. Still, they can check every other day or whatever, when it's not being cleaned.
Yeah, he can, he can still check them, so if we clean it three times a week, say, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then he can check it Tuesday and Thursday. Or we can do it Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, and then he can check it Monday and, yeah, like that, so.
Yeah, it might be better on Saturday, because I'd rather go down there.
Yeah, I was just thinking about that. So Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday right now, and then, of course, you know, we'll just be as needed, and then we'll have, we'll get with Jackie to do on the off days. Okay. All right.
We still got, are we still using COVID relief on that cleaning of the park and stuff?
We are.
Budget amendment?
Yeah, it'll be a budget amendment. We've got money locked in there, and then, of course, it's looking like we will get a second fee, so I just don't know exactly when. So, and all of that...
All those receipts, we'll turn them back in later, but we still have all the money that they gave us, the initial...
Up front.
Because they did half my salary and quarter at my end, so it's not allocated to a specific...
Almost $30,000.
That goes towards whatever, like the, there was, like, the specific ones for, like, the chairs and whatever had to be used for that, the other stuff was what we needed it for.
Yeah, and then the good thing about it is, is that the second SLOSS relief bill, we can take our, our cleaning and for, for the bathrooms end for this, and we can turn those receipts in and be reimbursed for that. All right. Any more questions about that? Okay. All right. The next thing is discussing vote on mulch for walking trails. And I will, I'll say it.
Are you voting on the cleaning stuff?
Do we need a vote on that, or just...
You don't need a vote on that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had it right for the minutes. Now, the mulch for the walking trail, you can continue to throw a mulch at that walking trail, it's not going to work.
It was gone after like four months this year.
I, my, I've been to a lot of walking trails, I've taken my grandkids to a lot of them, in Cherokee County, Pickens County, and even Gilmore County. The thing that I've seen that works is paving, either, I, I wouldn't say sidewalks, but the asphalt paving, it just stays. And I know that we would, we'd have to clear out some of the trees on the sides, but it's a one-time thing. And if you're spending, you know, $3,000 to about $1,000 in mulch...
$200 on just the mulch last year, $120 for the delivery fee, and that was after they gave you a $150 discount on that one load, it was gone four months, like, there was nothing.
Yeah. I agree, I mean, when you're pricing a paving, with the mailings like we was talking about...
I haven't seen that, that didn't look good. I've seen it in Cherokee, and I've also seen it in Gilmore, it doesn't look good, and it breaks off, and you have to...
Stay there, this is not a problem.
But that asphalt paving, that's what I saw, they just did a whole two-mile section last year in Gilmore County there, and it, and it still looks great.
Oh, yeah, where the elderly can use it, you know, like...
There's a lot of elderly that washes out.
Right now, that you can't.
It's permanent.
Yeah, and I think that trail even loops around a little bit, so...
It does.
You know, it would make a nice area, so can you take that as an action to get pricing for that?
Yeah, I don't hear a call for that, too.
Can you, call Cherokee County, ask Jeff Morton for some recommendations?
Can you, the trail you're talking about is paved, can you, you said it's Gilmore County?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know anybody in Gilmore County that could contact us, see if they used to do it, or...
I do, but I think Cherokee County, they, we've got, they did the same thing in some of Cherokee counties, and I did, Cherokee County has it down, and I think it's... Cherokee County has it down, and I think it's these Cherokee, that, that part that's down there near the dump. They have some of the, I don't know how far in it's paved like that, but I know it's.
There's another one. It goes all the way around and loops around.
And it's asphalt.
Our problem is we make the little bridges. It's getting up quick with the cross from one side to the bridge the other. They may have to cut a little bit of the wood and still keep it going.
Somebody started to cut in some, because the guys keep going on, having to push them off. Taking four-wheelers and stuff down, tearing at the mulch and making mess back there.
But yeah, we'll get prices from a few people.
Yeah. Let's find out who to get from. And I can be, oh, yeah, I can call, I can call Gilmore.
So it just will be expensive. It will be expensive.
I'd rather do it than throw in.
It's permanent, because every year, you're having to re.
You're just doing it anyway.
And it opens it up wider for, for more people of the community.
So in three years, we've roughly put seven thousand, about seventy-five hundred dollars in there. And even if it's twenty thousand dollars, that, that investment, you're looking at, you know, that's a, it'll cover us for a long time.
That's one of the sploes categories.
It is, so it's not coming out during the fun. I'll, I'll get with, I know the mayor in Gilmore, I can check with them as well and see who they use and find out who their parking lot guy is and.
If they need to get a lot or two to maintain it until we get there, of course, they got a lot already up here, don't they?
They can use all that.
There's a lot of sun set up there, but.
There are many nuggets, because the mini nuggets are for the parks.
For the parks.
I did call Southgate and get pricing in. It's exactly the same as it was last year. And pulled the records. We used eighteen hundred dollars in mini nuggets last year and twenty-two hundred dollars in mulch, which would have been almost twenty-four hundred if they had given it a discount.
If we didn't get a lot or two from Southgate to let it touch after we get it down, it's fine with me.
Sure, that's a massive mess.
It is. It's so bad. Well, we walked it a couple of days ago, and all these other aren't bad. I mean, most of the matches gone. But there's that one area that's back between the bridges that's just, and Jackie's been back and worked it and worked it. And the people take machines back there and start playing, and it gets kicked up and ratted. And it's just, it's a constant. So.
They shouldn't have the tollards.
Well, we have signs in the next section that no motor vehicles allowed. And I told Ricky to look into having some type of concrete thing where you can put posts in, where they can take them up and they can get the machines in to stop that, because it's going to.
Oh, it sounds, yeah.
We all have to, have to put strategically, because there are places where they can get in, but to stop.
We can plant some trees there.
Stop.
We can plant some trees within one area.
Well, they've cleared out another area coming from five even, like, because you have the trail entrance. And there's like, they cut in from the side to come in, because they had blocked off. So they're, you know.
If it's paved, does that make that not fun anymore? Or does it invite it?
I think it probably invites it.
Yeah, if you get, if you get one of those skateboards, one of those cool little like papers, you slide in it and you slide yourself into a tree, you're going to be hurt. It don't grip like, like my house. Not that I'm speaking out of experience, but to say that, that was much younger. Okay. So the next up is item C, discuss a vote on purchase of speed bumps. I think that Officer Danny Davis recommendation, but, but again, this is, it's up to the council on how you feel about purchasing speed bumps. Kelsey did her homework and.
These are bumps. Well, if we're going to do bumps, I mean, humps instead of bumps, there is an auction to get rid, in order for us to get rid of this truck in May, the government auction. So if that's the case, and they're going to be replaced with larger ones, then I would like to get rid of some of the bumps in the auction, because we've got so much money invested in these and they're just sitting here.
I'm fine. We're getting rid of them there too, brother. Can we use, do we need any out here for our parking, to park up against or anything before we, or at the park or anywhere?
Save those for the paved walking trail.
What a smart idea.
I'm just kidding. Yeah, well, no, some of them will probably be good to put on there. But I don't, I mean, we've got a lot of them. I can't remember how many I purchased, but there's a bunch of them down there in size and.
Can I make a comment on it?
Not supposed to, but you can.
Oh, okay.
I'm allowed.
I'm not surprised at the data from the study, because it starts and starts basically at the railroad tracks. And then you have, you don't have really the distance to open up. It's Pickens, because I live there, and I stop sign there, and people fly through the stop sign all day long. I didn't know how it's their best use at the stop signs to, to slow, whenever you have to stop. But by stopping, you slow the, the overall growth speed that goes through there. It's, it's really dangerous, but it's.
I agree. And so Marsha Heaton's been almost hit there at her stop sign, because her house is right close to the road. And that's what she said, they fly through there. And that was what she, her concern was. Now, maybe that's, that's something that the council could think about, is maybe putting something more of a permanent, like what Kelsey's talking about here, on one side or the other of that stop sign in a couple of places on Blue Ridge, I mean, on Pickens Street.
That's not a bad idea.
The catch to that, though, which was part of the reason they were pulled up, is that you either have to run them all the way across the street, because people will go around them. But the downside that if you're going to do it, you need to have something on either side of the road, because they then run into people's yards to avoid doing over the speed blocks. Because they don't have people calling, because cars are driving through their yard, to avoid speed bump, over the sidewalk, through the yards.
So what would we, what would we put?
If it was by yard, there would be giant rocks there, because they're not really very good. Just saying.
You just put a pole there.
With nails, in class.
I don't think we can do nails in class, Kelsey, but.
Just saying.
Have you ever been to bowling park?
I have.
Okay, you know, they have the speed humps?
Mm-hmm.
Back a couple of years ago, those kids do the same thing. They think it's cool to run their tires off the, off the roadway. Well, now they've installed just a short guard rail at the speed humps to keep the kids from doing that.
Yeah.
It's very inexpensive. They're wood. You know, that would just deter people from.
Yeah, it's just something to keep them from going around.
Of course, it's rocks. It's rocks.
So we really have like two areas. One is at the park, which, when we revamp that park, that may not be a bad thing to put something there. And the other one is at, at Marsha's. So, I mean, what are your thoughts on that?
I know it was a headache last time.
That's right.
James got brought off the church.
Lails, if you know that, that's the next time.
Really?
Yeah, they'd have said.
I'll tell you what. Let's hold off. We have, we're going to do a study in May, and let's, let's see what, let's see if there was a feasible need for it. And once we, you know, have the study done on, on Pickens Street in May, and then we can go from there.
Well, y'all can write tickets for running stop signs, can't you? I mean, don't have to please right over in Cherokee County.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's what Keith's talking about, Cherokee, right?
Right on the border there, yeah.
Yeah.
Pickens write them for that, on that side all the time.
And that's why when they do, start writing more tickets.
But honestly, I have to stress again, they, they really do go fifty miles an hour.
Oh, yeah. I've seen it go through the stars.
I did get a cost for that, those speed boxes, about thirty-six hundred dollars. And that comes with a two-year warranty, the software that goes into the box, because this isn't the only report you can run.
Yeah.
High charge and all that stuff. But that's, that's included in that price and the mounts that you mount to a pole.
What did I say? Did I tag number one? It doesn't. Maybe we can just get over these tickets and they go up.
Okay, so we're going to hold it until May, and we'll revisit speed bumps in May.
And we can, between here and May, if y'all want them in different areas, you know, all you have to do is shoot me an email and say, hey, can I get one up here for a week? Can I get one at this, this spot for a week? And the stop sign area that you're talking about, we could post one on the stop sign.
Mm-hmm.
And if it reads thirty miles an hour, then we know they're blowing through the stop sign, if that makes sense. So.
Yeah.
We can do different things. What are the council?
That sounds good. Can you, can you, can you do something maybe sooner than later? I was there. Let's start with the, let's start with the, the stop sign there at the park.
Okay.
And then I want to hit the one down by Marsha. But there's just a, there's a few houses on, on that side that, that's closer to the road than, you know.
I just, we just have to have a place that we can mount it to.
Both have stop signs.
Standard pole.
Yeah, both of those sections have stop signs.
We can have Ricky put you up a.
Yeah, there's poles.
It's just got to be like a, you know, like a stop sign to mount it on.
I think he's got extra poles down at the maintenance bar. So wherever they need one, I can get him to look around.
All right, the next step is discuss and vote on the IGA with Cherokee County for the Kennesaw Avenue drainage project. So I know we talked about it the last time. The IGA just says that we're entering into an agreement with Cherokee County. They're going to basically manage the project for us with project manager. They're going to be responsible for putting the sploes, all the sploes reporting back to the state for us and that kind of stuff. I am going to shadow them, so I know how to do it for them next time. But this just covers, the cover's been and it covers us. Okay.
I'll send this to Jeff to look over it.
It looked fine to me.
Okay. Does everybody have a chance to look at it? You want to give a comment?
No, I mean, those are just a basic. I just, I just like to bring, they have kept your head and eyes on it.
Anybody have questions about it for me?
They're going to oversee the whole project.
Yes. Yes. I mean, we'll still be involved, the council, I sound, will still be involved in that. And like when the bid comes in, we'll be involved in all that. But as far as the actual project, they'll have people that they throw at it, like project managers and things like that. Some inspectors and things. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the IGA with Cherokee County for the Kennesaw Avenue drainage project?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, with a second?
Second.
On paper? You announce. Thank you. The next is street sign replacing. Kelsey's done all the homework on that. I know she was working with Cherokee County trying to get signs, but she found, she found where we had gotten signs before, and then she's got some prices for us.
Well, I have the prices from that company, but also compared the prices from the other ones. The first price list is the better price list. It was through GIS, the Correctional Institute, passing, which I'm assuming is probably comparable to what Cherokee would have given us anyway. The original estimate that they sent us is not, would not be correct. The last page has closer than what it would be, just because some of them are usually got the different sizes for the same sign. So I can go back and check and see which ones ours were. So the highlighted ones are the ones that we would actually need.
In this last page?
So the last page are the highlights. I just went, there's a piece of tape from the adding machine. So the total, instead of being like three thousand and something, was like twenty-five hundred dollars. And I have two other estimates from other companies online. A lot of them did not offer a lot of the signs we needed, or they did not have the correct sizes. So even that estimates there, that would have been smaller, they were still missing large amounts of the signs. So that was only a partial estimate for what we would have needed. And then some of them were still over what those prices would have been. Anyway, the ones, there were a couple of the custom ones, because we need a blind child signs up here that were not. The ones that are there, ones that I found on Amazon, we just needed to get something up really quick in the interim. So they do a custom one there. The no motor vehicles are for the walking trail. Sploes signs that we can get up when we're doing projects. And we need new City Limit signs, because some of them have been stolen. They keep disappearing. I think the last time they took the sign, and then a couple of days later came back and took the poles. So I'm not sure what they want. It was boring. But anyway, we needed, we were going to revamp some of that too, which Keith brought another, another sign image thing, which I made copies of. And of course, let's let them out. But this was more just to get an idea, because the one that we currently had, I think, says Nelson City Limits, home of Claude Aikens, da-da-da. If we're going to change any of that, this is the time to do that. I don't know if we're going to hold on to that, if we want to. I had him throw the new logo on there just to see if it would change any of the pricing. It didn't. He has the one, because we, some of these, I think we have to have some of them that have like actual Nelson City Limit on them when you, when you're entering some of the corridors. But we also have, you know, you have arterial roads, and then you have roads that are non arterial. Because you see some City Limit signs that are smaller, you see some that are much larger. Ours are currently forty-eight by thirty-six. The image she has on here is a forty-eight by twenty-four, but she sent me a different price, which would be the highlighted price that's on there. I think they were eighty-five dollars. So I was going to stick with the same size as the ones that we currently have. But I don't know if we're going to keep, do we want to keep the Claude Aikens on there? Do we want to put something else on there? Do we want to, this is kind of the time that we, we have to decide that. When we have Mr. Edmondson, that was a Purple Heart recipient. But no, I'm not dishing Mr. Aikens in any way. But if we're going to change anything, this is kind of the time to do that. So.
Maybe, does anybody here feel the need to have that on there? I mean, he was only here six months of his life, the first six. I mean, I'm just saying. I don't know if anybody else that identifies with it.
Well, I mean, I don't want to stir the pot.
I don't have a warbeater.
And that's kind of how I look at it, is that it's willing to give their life. And, I mean, granted, we have a park named after him, but, you know, he was captured by the Nazis. And, you know, there was a whole story behind that one. And if we're going to honor someone, to me, that, that's more an admirable person to, to honor and put on your City Limit sign than someone that didn't look back after they left. But that's my opinion.
Or maybe you just leave it simple, you know.
Yeah, if you don't put it on there.
Just seal it on it.
Yeah, and you don't have to put anything, but it's just, I don't know if that's something that we hang on to. Well, we don't hang on to it.
I like, I like it, just the, me personally, I like it plain, and I think that Mr. Edmond's, we could give him, we need to revamp his style.
We say, well, I think that needs to be made in marble too, so it just, it stays. Only it's not something that has to be constantly redone. But that's another time. Yeah.
Kelsey, you did a great job in getting all that together.
I know.
Pictures and everything.
That's for the, he sent that in your case. So anyway, do we want, the, the one that Keith sent was the other one that's, I don't know. I'll grab it and then I'll let you guys see it. But I think we do have to have some of these that are, are the normal city entrance, someone's coming in. But I think we currently have, here it was five or seven, of the, the ones coming in that look like this.
The twenty-four by forty-eight.
It's, it's twenty-four. It's actually forty-eight by thirty-six. She just didn't do another revamp, but I actually had her price the one, like the correct size for what we currently have, because they're actually big signs. But she just sent back the same image size, just giving you a different price on it. But the ones that Keith had were the ones that looks like a marble background. And do you mind grabbing that? It's sitting, I've had, I've made copies. I just forgot to bring them for everybody. It's more like an entry, like when you come in, it's kind of like when you go in Ball Ground, like walk into Ball Ground.
Once you pass this one, then you can go walk into Nelson after that.
But I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's one that you would really get a company like this to do. I think it might need something more we have done there on. But just something to keep in mind at the same time. But these are, we've got to get these done. We've been trying to get pricing on this since last month.
I don't know if you have to have the places. I mean, I don't think you have to have a City Limits sign on.
I don't know. See, and I don't know. Hopefully, this is what happens when you put a finisher. Thank you.
I really like that.
The word City Limits and population.
I think it's just traditional to do it, but I don't think it's required.
There is, there's money to it. No, I didn't have this image just sent in there, so I just grabbed a logo and put it in, just to see if it would change any of that stuff.
And I can check. I'm just giving you the locker and the rest of it.
Yeah, the locker and the rest of it, just wait on it. The locker, Kelsey.
So we're talking about replacing this one of the.
Well, even just something like coming in, like Ball Ground just had the big entries out when you go in there. It's just kind of something that's like, that sets us apart, like come in, it's like, you know, because right now, even if you pass a City Limits sign, you come in and you, all you, Evan has an awesome sign out there. And you marvel, it is awesome. You come in, there you go. But you don't.
Wherever we put one of these at.
I'll talk to Marvel's sound.
Well, I've, I've planted, I've planted seeds with him. Like, it's kind of, you know, if we, if he would allow us to do something like that's a smaller, something smaller than what we have, that, then we would have some type of agreement with him that we would maintain it. We would maintain the sign. We would maintain all of the grounds around the sign. So.
We did that initially.
Yeah, nothing that we do is going to compete with that. And it's just going to look like it's nothing. But if we do add it to the top of it and do it in marble, it'll look better. It won't take that much.
But we also need something like this, maybe on the building, or just something just.
Where the park is at, we do need a sign there. That sign needs to be updated. It's, it's janky right now. And then I would like to look at redoing. And then, um, I would like to look at redoing the sign on the front of the city hall that we've taken down.
You mean the one that just had the.
I think, yeah. I think it's one at, yeah, one at a time, but yes. I agree, but I like those right here, this would look good out there by the park. So maybe something like that above, above, um, Evans.
Oh, I could submit some other, you know, variations on it too, for you to look at as well if you'd like.
I like it, looks really nice. Evan would make this sign.
I would get with him, I would have fit like committed to something that I'll see around the edges of with them so far, but.
Not for parade yet.
Yeah, whatever, no. And well, it's like, I mean, I've still got to get him to make Susan's nameplate done and they've been, they've had some fire stuff over there and the guy that runs the saw was sick and so.
What's the total, not for the signs?
That, um, the total for the stuff that they've given me for this stuff, it came to with the shipping was like two thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Two thousand. I'm just gonna say twenty-three hundred.
I would say twenty-three hundred, just in case something, there's any variation.
Okay. So any more questions about the, um, these signs that we need now before we vote? Can I get a motion to approve the street sign replacement, uh, for, for, um, for the city of Nelson for twenty-three hundred dollars? And it's not just the city of Nelson sign, it's all the signs for the city of Nelson.
I'll see.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-three hundred dollars for the signs.
Okay. Now, wait a second.
Second.
Okay, call in favor? You announce, thank you. Okay, good. Next up is discuss the request for a bid for demolition packet for eighty Blue Ridge Avenue.
I just need answers for this one. This one, um, this was the original bid packet for Spring Street, so I pulled stuff out and just kind of plugged information in for that one. I need the dates, I need to know what all y'all want in the bid packet, whether if we're gonna include the trees and stuff or whatever, um, in order to get it out so we can start getting bids on it.
Well, one tree gotta be cut down there and then that chain link fence has gotta be jerked in.
Is that our fence or is that?
Yeah, it's our fence.
Okay, I just want to make sure before making a run.
Okay. So a tree removal.
You know about the side of the house.
Is that, but I'm saying, is that the one next to where the other tree was taken out that we split the cost of?
No.
Okay. I just wanted, that's what I wanted to.
Yeah, we'll leave that up and down there.
So tree removal.
Chain link fence.
Tree removal.
You're talking about if they're true, they'd be cutting down. Yeah, of course, somebody might be bad.
Is it just one tree?
Yeah.
So tree removal, chain link fence.
About the same too. Want to do that?
Well, the list of specifications for twenty-four Spring Street is in, it's page thirteen of this one, so I've left it in as an example.
You check, it's probably an hundred.
Yeah, check and see.
My thought is, is I wouldn't want somebody, I would want, if we don't remove it, I wouldn't want somebody coming in thinking that they could hurt some barrel, you know, so let's, let's see.
But it may have a viable system.
Probably not one that.
So check.
What's that?
Set it.
I bet you.
Okay.
We can check with the county and see if they permit it.
If it's a viable system, do you want a bunch of place or you want it removed? If it's a viable system, you should go and leave it.
Yeah, but I bet it's not. You can check.
Yeah, there's been a couple that have surprised me, they weren't updated, but.
That's right. We haven't, we're next door.
Okay. All right, anything else?
Just everything hauled off, nothing buried, I mean, no marble buried or anything like that on site. Just let them haul everything out.
Okay.
Because somebody will want to build that. I hope they can combine the two lots.
You should be able to, if the city owns them.
Yeah, yeah.
It's got furniture on five and furniture on Blue Ridge, so it could be potentially commercial.
For what would be the possibility of donating that land to like Habitat or somebody like that, if you let them build a new house for some needy family or.
That would be a Jeff question.
I don't think you can donate to anybody but a governmental entity.
So Habitat wouldn't qualify for something like that.
I don't think so. I think they're private charity.
Can we do it in a reduced rate?
No.
No, because it would be, you're putting out for, to, for bid or whatever. You'd just be putting it up for sale.
If there was some government entity that did something like that, you, you could probably do something like that.
There's several parts in town we need to get rid of though, because there's one up next to the house that, um, next to Marshall, it's mom's house, I think that was the city had, there's just several of them.
But they're so, that one's so tiny, you can't dig up anything with it.
But what do we have?
How big would this be?
It'd just be green space and you get credits for having green space.
How much is the two lots?
I think it's right under there.
Could that be something that you think about maybe for the sanitation? We've talked about that.
I would, they're, the, like, the industrial area out there, I would go there, because it's, you're, you're just taking it from a residential factory back to residential area, because there's houses over there. I'm not saying you can't do it, but.
Like you said, it's, it's on the commercial.
Yeah.
And then watch your trolls.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's right next to the body shop, but there's, like, there's houses that aren't in. I think your, your son's over there, I know my back raise over there, but, um, no, but there aren't people that live in the other ones.
Ideally, we can get a.
Unless that, I wouldn't want it next to my house, kind of, in white or.
Auction it off or whatever.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I mean, we can keep up the cost for what we spend and maybe auction it off later or something. I don't know if they hit breakers, what they spend on another lot or not.
Well, I mean, you know, play the backpack or something.
But I mean, demolition.
Did you ever check and see who, um, who owns the property of the steer, up there at the steer company?
I don't know. Okay. Well, I mean, I knew, I knew, but I don't have any idea who's selling it. He owns it to public record. It was, um, a chairman, now off the top of my head. But people keep calling and checking on it, so I think it's technically up for sale, but I think I'm a visiting.
Which one's that?
The, not like industry, the, the lot that's next to the steer company. Because I had several people have come to look at it, I think that would be a good place for the trash truck.
Right away.
It's like the steer company has those two lots and there's a lot next to it.
Next to it, that's right.
It would be a good one, because I think everybody's having a hard time doing anything with that lot, because there's that weird.
See, it's almost level. It's almost level.
If there's like a weird drain thing in it, that's awesome, because of the people that have gone up to look at it, they keep backing out of it for some reason. Then it would be good for us if we're just gonna park vehicles on it.
How big a lot is it?
It's like one point seven acre or something, I think it was a good size chunker there. It's not going for never expected, you know.
See what we can find out about that. I don't know, and then we can, we can find out who owns it.
The house on Blue Ridge, is there a, could we get it scheduled up to get surveyed while we're waiting on the demolition and all this?
Yeah, we, we need it surveyed.
Combine the run, survey, unless survey, then combine it together.
Yeah.
Who's that's the survey company we use, Cherokee?
Do what?
He's the survey company we use, Cherokee.
Yeah.
I think that's where I've been using.
Baller cake.
Saying you just call and have it surveyed?
Yeah.
Or we already have a survey on it?
We, we do on, I'm not sure about that little one, I believe Joe Jared surveyed.
I don't know. We'll, I'll talk to him this week about it and we'll check on it.
Just give them updated. Yeah, if we combine it, we'll need to do the whole thing anyways, probably. Just have a fresh one. Yeah.
And then you could get it made, just get the county to make it one tax parcel.
Right. And see, I don't know, Highway five is on the place you build the record store in city of Nelson.
Oh, here we go.
Dispassing them off, but the tax revenue. You literally run off the church now.
Separation of church and state.
I'm just, I'm just.
It's only every other Sunday.
Right. Y'all better order a bunch of speedhogs.
Right in front of the church.
Yeah.
Fight and do it greens bootlegging.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, do you need any additional information?
And just up the dates. And they need the information from Jeff for them to add, because I've looked and cannot find the previous ads that were run for it's Spring Street then.
Should we get it surveyed before we demo it and make sure that, that stay on the property estate? Yeah.
It doesn't matter to me, I mean, it's.
Because I'm just curious how, whether it comes close to the body shop or what.
And I can just keep on the, oops.
I hope we don't have that part. That's right. Be mine.
House burned down there.
How long do we need to run that ad for?
It's empty out.
About two weeks or, maybe zero.
We're not spending about a hundred thousand dollars in a state law requirement.
Okay.
Just whatever you want to do.
Couple weeks, absolutely.
Be a week for, we should be able to get somebody in within a week.
Right, two weeks and then that way, because it'll keep people out paper more.
Yeah.
Around two weeks.
No, we send up the, the. Yeah. Tell everybody.
Then they charge you tax.
We'll put it on website, take it, take it as well as night.
So around two weeks, I would.
So we're gonna have the survey done and not need to wait on the, the dates to plug in here anyway.
Okay.
Survey will probably take a little while.
Well, that's kind of the catch twenty-two. I mean, if we can get an idea of where it is, we may want to go and have it demo just because, I don't know, some survey companies are on top of stuff and they can get it done pretty quick and some are more backlog.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna matter with them.
I mean, as long as you have a pretty good idea.
You've got two lots, so.
We got a plan.
Yeah, you should.
We have an idea where it is, I mean, as long as they're not on top of somebody else's property.
Yeah.
This, I was just plugging numbers in about a month.
Yeah, I know, so if you did it, you'd do it.
Our next meeting, I actually had a major date for the April one, because it was falling on, on Easter and spring break, so I have it ready for April twelfth, so.
You can run it from, maybe next week, so. Didn't run it for two weeks, might be, starting next month. That's gonna be your date so far, is that be the seven, the eight? Eight. So the eight through the.
I have to, I have to have that first and then if you have to have it in by a certain date, no matter where to run. I have to have that two paper.
That's why I'm saying, so you've got all this week to, to do that, basically, you could start it next week.
Okay, but you're gonna say eleven?
No, tomorrow, no. No. Next week and then we can do it Monday, Tuesday. And then Sunday.
Let's see, I'll, I'll be having breakfast with the show ready Wednesday.
Good.
Get him out there. All right. Are we good with that now? All right. Next up is, um, discuss, um, collection company for past due taxes and sanitation accounts. Kelsey, she's got a good idea.
So I'm just over this. There's many people that just decided they're not paying taxes, so this is the company Pickens County uses, um, Linkwood Tax Services, Linkwood Tax Services, GMA, and actually offers the service too, but I would personally prefer this one because they said they can kind of coincide any issues we have or any sales we have with Pickens County, because more or less, if somebody's not paying taxes here, everyone's likely not paying them there either, so they could kind of do the sales at the same time. Um, usually by the time they send out a letter and they realize you're serious, they're gonna take care of it. The fees are in the first part of that phase one, they include, they send out a letter, they'll charge us fifty-five dollars per parcel that they send it out. If they owe less than fifty dollars, then they're gonna charge thirty dollars a letter. If it's not paid with that, with the letter being sent out and it has to go into a tax sale, then they charge two hundred dollars per parcel, that the fifty dollars or the fifty-five dollars or the thirty dollars, depending on which amount they charge, is taken out of that two hundred dollars. So you're never charged more than two hundred dollars per parcel. We only have a handful of them right now that are doing that. And I did ask her, because I have people come in that'll, you know, people that are struggling, that are honestly trying to pay it, and I have no issue with that. If they're, if they're making progress, they're paying it on here and there.
So do we give them the list that we want them to go after?
Yeah.
Sound like that.
And that way, it's, it's the ones that you send, like, you know, you get to the point you're sending a tenth notice, you know, I mean, waste and stance at that point, where it's, or they'll come in and they go, I'll pay this, and they make one payment and you don't see them for a year and a half, because they're not gonna pay it.
So the, yeah, the good news is, this gives us an avenue to collect, but it also, we also keep control.
It looks like they expect the city, where it says the county up is in, it's the.
Yeah, they just sent me like there's like little packets.